Thursday, August the 8th. We're already rolling right through the month of August and most of us haven't figured out where July went yet, so that's interesting. We're going to stand for the pledge and after that we invite you, if you so wish, to join us in a moment of silence. We're going to be certainly honoring and hope that you keep in your thoughts this morning, those victims and first responders that have dealt with the two tragedies recently in El Paso and Dayton. Would also always ask that you keep all those in public safety and the men and women in our armed forces in your thoughts. And I'd also like everyone to keep in your thoughts the family of Mark Duval, who was a longtime employee at the Carroll County Farm Museum, and I'll have more about him in a moment.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a good bit of priority Carol this morning, so we're going to try to get through it here as quickly as we can, but I do want to mention, I was going to say a little bit more about Mark Duval. Mark was a longtime employee of Carroll County Government. He started in roads and then found his niche at the Carroll County Farm Museum and subsequently put his finger and his mark and everything else out there that many of you see when you visit there. Mark was an outstanding individual. He was unfortunately battling cancer in the last year and unfortunately lost that battle. Had a memorial service for him last evening and just want to give a shout out to Mark and certainly his family and his wife Linda and his kids and everything else. So, he's going to be truly missed out there. Another employee that going to be tough to fill his shoes. So, on behalf of all of us, and I know Commissioner Weaver, you worked with Mark out there.
Great job.
Yeah.
We did. It's just a loss to the county.
Yep. So, just wanted to make sure that we gave a shout out to those folks this morning and certainly everybody at the Farm Museum who is saddened by this recent activity. So, priority Carol, Commissioner Boucher, I'm going to start down here this morning.
Yes, sir. Thank you, President. I'd like to start off by thanking all the people who came out to the New Windsor Night Out. We all did nights outs in our community. Special thanks to the EMS personnel and the nonprofit organizations that were there set up to debrief the public and understand what services are available to them. And on Sunday, Union Bridge had their community picnic. Special thanks to Sherri Thomas for organizing the event. It's good to get out to that small community, eat with them, chat with the people, and go for a walk around a local park. Also, thanks to Steve Blake and Dwight Amis at the Salt Waste Management. They gave me a tour to landfill. That was quite enlightening. They debriefed me on the long-term challenges we have as a county about managing our waste. Also, a special thanks to Jason McGonald, Bureau Chief of Facilities. He gave me a tour of several county buildings, including the Farm Museum. There's a lot that goes on these buildings that we're not aware of. The reason we stay comfortable, whether it's heating or air conditioning, his agency is responsible for, and we have a lot of equipment to maintain. So, thank you very much.
I just want to thank all the people at Hampstead for National Night Out, all of the businesses that came together, and the amount of food, the amount of things that they all gave away. I don't know how many hundreds of people there, I'd be afraid to guess at the way it was attended, but we had police, firemen, all in or acting with community people. It was a phenomenal turnout and it's what the community's all about. So, I just want to thank the people who donated everything to this. It was phenomenal.
Yeah, I think there's a common theme here, and again, not to labor on the horrific things that happened last week in El Paso and Dayton, but the importance of National Night Out, it couldn't have, I think, picked a better time for it to happen on Tuesday down in Seckville, Eldersburg. It was a wonderful event. And again, the continuing purpose of our National Night Out is to provide confidence to our community that those men and women in uniform, whether it's red, blue, EMS, or our military are there for our community to allow us to do the things we did. And it was just, it was a great testament on Tuesday, seeing that camaraderie between all those men and women in the different uniforms, working and talking and highlighting activities with the community. So, kudos to Carroll County in doing that. The other thing is, on Sunday, just I guess a political announcement, a public announcement, whatever you want to call it, Vietnam Veterans Pending Ceremony is happening on Sunday afternoon and Commissioner Lance and I will be attending in Westminster. So, all those absolutely deserving Vietnam veterans that have not been pinned at this point, you are welcome to attend in Westminster. It's going to be at Pritz Funeral Home in Westminster on Sunday afternoon, 1 o'clock.
Yeah, I want to add my colleagues' thoughts about National Night Out. Westminster do it a little bit differently. I think I went to six different community National Night Outs because you go around from one to the other because we don't have one central.
Yeah, but you were able to get to yours quicker than me.
Which was great. It was good. It was good. I thank the Westminster Police Department for driving me around to the different events and so forth. And one of the duties I have when I go to these different events, I have to have some food at each of the different things. It's a tough thing to do, but I manage to eat at every event I went to. It's something I have to do as the Commissioner, so I did that. But I do, like, the police are there, every one, the fire departments, they're the Boys and Girls Clubs, they're State Attorney's Office, they're at all of these different events, and a lot of community comes out. It's really, really a great thing. Also, like I said, I was down at Lehigh earlier this week, might have been yesterday, wasn't it?
Yesterday.
Yesterday. Commissioner Weaver and I were down at Lehigh, looked at the new conveyor belt system they have down there that takes their crushed rock and so forth, and one route to the, one from New Windsor to Union Bridge. Just tremendous engineering feat. Goes under the ground, goes over the ground, drops it from here, does all, it's just tremendous. And really, the move and all of that stuff with no disruption to the surrounding area. I mean, if they were trucking that, you'd be hearing it every single minute of the day. I can't remember having truck routes, they said, to truck trips they'd have to make each day, but there's, you don't see the dust, you don't see anything with this conveyor belt taking tons and tons and tons of this material from New Windsor Union Bridge. That was really, really nice to see.
Interesting to see 100 tons dumped, crushed, and on the way to the next town within minutes.
Yeah, like that.
I mean, within a couple of minutes, it's gone on the way to storage at another facility.
You had your turn. Also, I could say, I went out with permits and looked around, and actually, I went to two different places with permits. At one, they were building houses that are starting around $400,000. Another place I went to, the houses started about $200,000. But the thing that I was impressed with is that the quality of the homes are being built, the, you know, the expertise, the look, the energy efficiency, all the new stuff that's being put into houses, no matter whether it was $200,000, $400,000. The house, I think the house, we're getting very, very good product here in Carroll County. I really do. And that's all I have. Thanks.
I'm still wondering how you got chauffeured around too tonight, we didn't.
Yeah. I had to go from Manchester to Tawnytown. I was begging for a police escort, couldn't get it. Maybe it's because they were all tied up.
They were following you with the lights on.
Yeah. I've been chauffeured around by them, but it wasn't nearly as pleasant at all. That's a whole nother story.
And you do have a lot of gravel roads up there.
I know. Yeah, so, okay. So, I'm not going to, I'm not going to say anymore about that. I do want to say that our folks from Planning were at the Hampstead event with the new bicycle and pedestrian plan, Dick, and I think you will attest to the fact that that was a good, some good stuff going on.
That was phenomenal, the new bicycle and pedestrian plan, and people walking out with the plan to take it to read. It wasn't just there, I think the people from Planning were amazed. They'd never been to the Hampstead National Night Out, and it was surprising, the number of people walking out with the plan to read it and go through it. So, it was, it was educational all the way around. It was a good night.
Kudos to all the folks in Planning that made that happen. Linda Eisenberg and the team did a great job there. A couple of quick things for me. We mentioned a couple of us about the tragic events in El Paso and Dayton. The public needs to know that we are always being informed about security measures that are occurring in our county, and we get regular updates from law enforcement. So, there are many things sometimes that go without, some of them can't be said, as I would think most folks with common sense would know. But we are consistently talking with law enforcement and we're all over that to ensure that practices, procedures continue to be up to date here in Carroll. A couple shameless plugs. We will all be at the Maryland Association of Counties Conference next week. That is an amazing event, and a lot of our staff will be there as well, but the, I continue to say that the ability to be able to interact with your colleagues from across the state is quite frankly priceless. And we will have four days of that culminating with a personal event and a message from Governor Hogan on Saturday morning. Many of us are participating in a lot of the events down there. We are very honored in Carroll to have many of our staff leading the affiliate groups with Mako. Many of our folks are Chair of the different affiliates. I know IT, HR, a lot of those things. So, it's four days of a lot of hard work. Every now and then, we may have a little bit of fun, intermingled with that, but we spend a good deal of time interacting with everyone, so that's where it will be. Tomorrow night, set your DVRs and everything else. I've been asked to appeal, appear on the show State Circle, which is on PBS at 7:00 PM. As most of you know, we are dealing across the state with a shortage of volunteers who want to run into burning buildings while everybody else is running out. I've been doing that for 45 years now, and it's really starting to become a challenge for many of us across the state. So, the folks reached out to me. They want to interview me on the thoughts that I have on how we can deal with the challenge of that, because as I say, many of us are dealing with that. So, that's at 7:00 PM tomorrow night. I don't know what to tell you. I mean, the ratings will be over the top. So, 7:00 PM tomorrow night, PBS. Now, finally, we are honored today to have a group with us that, if you haven't seen this group, do I use, you're under a rock, because these guys are everywhere. And specifically, they focus on one of our challenges here, and not only here, but everywhere, and that's the opioid problem that we have. And not only that, but, you know, all of those things that challenge us when we get to the health and wellness of our county. This group was founded in 1987. Paul Zimmerman is here, who was a co-founder of the group. Paul has another gig across the street, but Paul does this, and we truly appreciate the fact that he gets a lot of young people involved in this from across the county and makes some huge changes and differences in the way in which people think as to how we are dealing with these issues. They've appeared on many films. They're currently on the State's Attorney Tour as well when we go around to the schools and present. And what is remarkable about this is when you can get this kind of influence from your peers, that's where we're making a difference. We can sit here as adults and say this all day long, but when the peers get involved and say this, kids listen, and I think that's very important. So, they just recently were awarded the 2019 Crisis Intervention Team Maryland Instructor of the Year Award, and I want to congratulate them for that. Certainly, you guys earned that and then some. And we are honored to have them here today, and Paul, if you'd come up and just give a brief, a brief description of these great young people, and then you all that are in the audience are in for a treat because we're going to get just a small sample of what these tremendous young people do. So, Paul?
Thank you. We're entering our 33rd season this year, and these guys are amazing because they're all going through school, they're all involved with school projects, and they still put in about 150 hours a year of volunteer time to create characters and to present these characters. And we perform every month down at Shoemaker. We also have done a lot of stuff with the Health Department with, we're going to be working with Crisis Intervention with the nursing staff at the hospital this year. And like I said, over the years, we've done so many shows. In fact, one of your employees was a member of ours too. At least one of your employees was a member of ours. So, what we're going to do today, we didn't know we were going to be doing this, so we just kind of like said, okay, let's do this, 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 and this, and the kids didn't know who they were.
Improv. Improv.
Exactly. Exactly. Yep. And so, and they didn't know who they were going to play. And that's typically one of our things that we do, is the fact that nobody knows who they're going to portray in a particular scene until about 20 minutes before we go on. So, they have to know all of the roles, they have to know all the background of all of the characters that we're going to be performing that day. And sometimes we change it from like a son to a daughter, so there's so many variables in what we do. And they worked hard to learn these roles, to learn these people. And the reason that Roberta Gore and I decided to start it that way is so that we didn't have to worry about people memorizing lines, and if somebody couldn't be there, then we're stuck and we have to do something else. So, everybody knows every role, all the backgrounds, and we don't use lines, you know, there's no scripts. So, we start from beginning to end, just all depending on how they feel that day.
Comments from, I know that many of you have seen these guys countless times, so...
I think in 87, Roberta Gore was a big part of this, and she taught at North Carroll, and I've seen many performances from foolproof and impact you've made over the 30-some years. So, thank you for what you do. I know you guys weren't part of that original group, but they have really made impact throughout the county.
And just to give a real quick brief, I'm sorry, Dad.
I'll also say, I truly appreciate what these students are doing in relation to the opioid epidemic, because to hear from your peers, the information is received much better than us as adults. We're, you know, I always say we're old stick in the muds to the kids, but when their peers bring these issues up, they pay more attention to it. So, thank you very much. Speak for yourself.
And just to, real briefly, to tell you, one of our normal shows, we'll do five scenes, one right after the other, and then the audience gets to ask questions of the characters. So, everything is truly improv.
Excellent. So, no questions from the audience today because we've got to stick on schedule, but we're going to see a brief, a brief skit by this group. And pay attention because, again, what they, what they provide is amazing. So, we're going to get up and go out in the audience, and you guys are going to come up here and we'll, do we say, take two or sign on a tape one or something?
Thank you all very much.
[inaudible]
Hey, Mom, how are you?
Um, I'm good. How are you?
I'm good. What you doing?
Um, I need to talk to her. So, listen, you know, your dad and I were talking, and we were thinking, you know, we've been doing really great since you came back from rehab, and we're really proud of you. You still have a lot of work to do, a lot of things you need to overcome, but we're thinking for right now, we would like to give you back your car keys, but it's just to drive to school and it's just to drive to work.
But I haven't seen my friends in...
I know. I'm sorry, but you still have a lot you have to overcome before we think you're ready for all of that again. But this is a good first step.
Please, can I just, can I just see my friends? I haven't seen them in...
Do you want your keys or not?
I'll take them. Sorry.
No, it's fine. I understand you're frustrated, but you've got to start somewhere. So, thank you for making it work. I'll be in the other room, call me immediately, okay?
Great.
Hey, man.
Hi. Good to see you in a while. How are you?
Good. How are you?
I'm good. Um, I...
What are you up to? What's going on?
Um, not much. Um...
What's new? I feel like I haven't seen you in a while.
Because you didn't visit me in rehab. Why, why was that?
Well, it's not really a place for me, you know, like, the stuff that we used to do, like, I know rehab's not really accepting.
It's not that far away.
I mean, I just didn't feel comfortable. But you understand that, right? Well, it's, I'm here now, okay?
It's whatever.
I'm here with you. So, let's catch up.
Um, yeah, um, how, how are you, how are you, how have you been doing?
I'm not too bad. I actually have maybe a little plan for later tonight, if you're interested. I know.
Okay. Rich, my mom just gave me back my parties, and I can only go to work and school, and if she finds out I never go anywhere else, she's going to kill me.
I mean, if it's driving, I can, I can drive, but there's a party that James is having.
No, no, she's going to find out. She's going to find out somewhere. I know.
I...
Can't we just, can't we just hang out?
Look, all right, I think you need to relax a little bit.
No, 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 Rich, Rich, where are you? My mom's in the other room.
What the hell?
But she can smell that.
I paid good money for that.
And I don't care. This is my mom's house.
Oh, gosh, what happened to you?
What happened to me?
Yeah, you used to be so chill. We did this all the time. It's not like we were so...
I'm a better person now, Rich.
A better person? So, what, I'm trash now?
No, I'm...
You go away for a month and now I'm nothing.
No, I didn't, no, I didn't say that you were trash. I'm just saying that, can't we just hang out? We don't have to do...
Clearly, you can't just hang out if you won't come do what we used to do. You've changed.
No, I...
You know, and if you're going to be this new, bigger person, I'm going to need my money back from the deal that we split.
No, you said you would cover it.
Yeah, but clearly, things have changed. Am I wrong?
Listen, if I just get the money for you, will you just go?
Fine.
Valerie!
Daddy, daddy, it's not what it looks like. I swear.
No. Were you, were you just in your mother's purse?
It's not what it looks like. It's not.
Richard, get out of my house right now.
Uh, could you give us a minute?
Dad, no.
Call the police.
No, Dad, it's not what it looks like.
Valerie, get this trash man out of my house right now.
No, Rich...
You know what? I'm going to stick around for this, okay?
Are you, are you serious?
I'll get it from you later.
No, Dad, Dad, it's not what it looks like.
Oh, it's not what it looks like?
Yes.
What was the money for, Valerie?
It was, hey, what's all this screaming?
Did you know Richard was over?
Mom, Richard was here? Listen, I, I didn't know what to do. You just came in...
You didn't know what to do. You left him in our house.
And his hand was in your purse grabbing money.
I didn't need to. It wasn't what it looks like, Dad.
What, what happened?
Valerie, give me the money. What is this?
Valerie, come on now.
That's not mine. Mom, are you...
Oh, you're going down the tap again. I spent so much money trying to get you out of rehab.
Dad, I swear, it's not mine. Mom, can you just listen to me, please? It's not mine.
No, you're going to go down the tap again? What, what's next, coke?
We just put you through rehab, and we just gave you your keys back, and now you're breaking our trust again? Valerie, it's not what it looks like. That was Rich's.
Oh, so you're just going to tell us lies?
No, I told you it's true.
Valerie, Valerie, go to your room right now.
That's a much, much better show than we put on.
And it's a great segue. Ed, go to your room.
I'm telling you, you could hear a pin drop. You could definitely hear a pin drop. Great job. And really fantastic. Very sobering, so, thanks.
Yeah, thank you guys very much. We do have a lot of followers that watch these sessions, so not only the audience...
Believe it or not.
But yeah, believe it or not, but I'm sure they were, they were moved as well. And I encourage everyone to follow this group, follow them as they do their performances throughout our county. And on behalf of all of us, we truly appreciate the efforts that you put into it. And bottom line, you guys are good. It's that too. So, so thank you all very much. Another round of applause for this fabulous group. Paul, thank you very much. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
And I'm scared of the father.
That booming voice.
All right, so thank you guys very much. We appreciate it. So, we'll take, you guys want to roll or whatever you want to do here, we're going to, we're going to roll into our regular agenda, so, yep. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice job.
Hey, good luck in school too. Coming up soon.
Couple weeks.
Yeah.
School stuff.
Yeah. Okay. All right, great way to start out today, seeing young people put their heart and soul into something that we all feel very strongly about. Number one on our agenda, approval of the FY19 year-end adjustments, and we have Deb Effingham with us this morning, our Bureau Chief of Budget.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And she's accompanied by...
And I have Heidi Peppin with me. And all the other analysts that...
And the whole budget office is in the back, so...
It's very hard to get us here today for our deadline. We have a deadline today to get our year-end adjustments done. Every year, we come to you with four standard year-end adjustments. The first one is an operating budget resolution for centralized agency costs, and I'll get into more detail as I go through them. I just want to give you a summary. The second one is movements within departments. If there are savings within a department, we'll look there first before going to the reserve and cover any overspending there. The third one is from the reserve for contingency. And the fourth resolution is any capital cleanup that we have. We have just some minor things that are ready to close. So, the first operating budget resolution, O-19-12, is the central agency allocations. We budget certain items centrally, such as our healthcare, our fleet with the fuel and the equipment purchases, our IT, our public safety, our utilities. So, we budget them centrally, but for cost accounting purposes, they are then moved by accounting to the appropriate departments. So, all we are doing here is moving the budget... So, all we are doing here is moving the budget to those expenses. We're not asking for any more budget, it's just a reallocation. So, I ask that you approve operating budget 0-19-12 of nineteen million, seven oh seven, three sixty-three point seven eight. And you have the backup with you. I, I gave a copy to each of one of you so you could see how the movements are happening, um, and what is, is happening. So, um, I request that you approve that resolution.
All right, gentlemen, any questions on, on the movement of these funds?
No, it looks mostly repair, shifting.
Commissioner Boucher?
Well, we need to make individual motions on each one or we do one card?
Yes, yep, one at a time.
Got you, thank you.
And I'm sorry, Dave, you said?
Well, I, I just, most of them are just, uh, it's like overrun here or help to shift between departments and.
So, this is, this is typically routine?
Yes.
As you move these into the, the various areas that they need to be moved into?
Yes.
Okay, we do this every year?
We do this every year, we budget centrally, that's the key, we budget centrally. But then for cost accounting and reporting, we have to have them divvied out into the different departments.
I move the county board of commissioners approve the year-end adjustments including, including resolutions 0-19 point one two.
Second.
Any other questions on this resolution? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The second operating budget resolution is 0-19 dot thirteen in the amount of two million, two seventy-three, two-two, eight point eight-seven. Now, these are all the adjustments that are happening within departments. So, you might have one bureau that is a little bit over and there's another bureau within that department that had some savings. So, we're not going to a reserve, it's still within their budget allocation, but we need approval to move budget. So, I'm going to just highlight some of the large ones, you have a list. Um, the most notable one is an accounting, uh, function of LoSAP. Uh, we budget LoSAP in its own line item for transparency. Um, in FY19, we budgeted one million, two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars to go into the LoSAP fund. Accounting, however, will charge it to Visa. So, we have to move that budget from LoSAP into Visa, even though it did go into the LoSAP fund. So, that's the large one. The second largest one is, um, having to cover storm emergencies in the amount of five hundred and fifty-five thousand. Now, in FY19, we started off the year rough with a lot of, um, storms that were rain events and, and flooding events. Um, also towards the end of the year, they contacted us and asked, can we fill up the salt tank, I mean, salt dunes? And we said yes. So, they're in a good shape for coming into FY20's, um, storm season. So, that put us over five hundred and fifty-five thousand for storm emergencies. However, there was enough savings within the Department of Public Works to cover those expenses. The next large one is the sheriff's overtime. We have been, um, informing of you of that throughout the year. Um, it ended up that they, they need two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars from detention center. So, detention center had enough savings in their budget to, to cover this overtime. And we believe the overtime, um, is due to vacancies and the launching of the SRO program at the very beginning of the year without having the positions actually filled yet. Um, so, the other ones are kind of minor, uh, lots of times when people, um, you know, if people leave or if there's a career ladder, there might be some salary that needs to be covered from another budget. So, um, I ask that you, if you don't have any questions, I ask that you, um, approve resolution 0-19 dot one three.
I, I do have a question, maybe comment. Over the years, have you seen trends? Has there been trends analysis where we've been moving money like this, especially the large sums, every year? From detention center to overtime or for, from DPW to Phil Salt? Uh, because to me, I'd rather do this in the budget process.
Yes.
You know, than have to after the fact, especially if we see trends over years. I mean, or are these anomalies? If that's the right word.
Um, I would say every year, we have a list, but it's not a consistent list.
Okay, and, and that's key, and that is kind of where I'm going is, so if there is consistencies that we do see, especially these large sum items, consistent over a five-year, ten-year period. Say if it's a five-year, well, three out of five years or four out of five years, we've been doing it, then we should be addressing that in the budget process and not after the fact.
And I will go back and look over like the past ten-year period to see if there is any trends that we're just not aware, you know?
Yeah.
It hasn't come to us, you know?
Okay. Yeah, that's fair, thanks.
Any other questions on this resolution?
Make the motion, the board of commissioners approve the year-end adjustments included in resolution 0-19 point one three.
Second.
All right, got a motion in second on resolution nineteen one three. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous as well. All right, next.
Okay, the next operating budget resolution is 0-19 dot one four and it's from the reserve. We thought that, oh, we don't have anything coming from the reserve, which is great. And then I noticed that debt service was overspent. Um, so, I do have something and it's, um, we need forty-four thousand dollars to cover debt service. Now, this is, I, I want to make sure that you understand what's happening. We always estimate how much we think the bond sale will be. And, um, it happened so that Rob sold more bonds than we were expecting, um, in the, um, pavement preservation area. And so, this is just a timing. We have more interest in nineteen than I was expecting. But then again, in twenty, when we did the budget process, we knew that, um, what we're expecting bond sales to be in twenty is less because we spent, we, we issued more in nineteen. So, it's just a timing issue, um, but it does need to come from in the reserve because it's not within a department and we'll need forty-four thousand dollars to cover it.
Questions?
Make the motion, the board of commissioners approve the year-end adjustments included in resolution 0-19 point one four.
Second.
All right. All those in favor of that resolution?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous as well. And finally?
Okay, finally, uh, resolution C-19 dot nineteen, this is a capital budget resolution. Um, there are some self-help projects, um, self-help is some, we, we help out some of the community, uh, projects by giving them some funds. They're, uh, ready to be closed, there's funding left over. They go back into, um, the central self-help project to be distributed at a later date. So, um, we, and I see you, you kind of laughing, a small dollar amount. But, we, we do need authorization to move these dollar amounts in the capital budget. So, um, I ask that you approve C-19 dot nineteen.
And, and there's a point to be made here about the fact that it is a small amount. This is a testament to the fact that you guys do an amazing job, right to the penny, on a multi-million dollar budget that we deal, deal with here in the county. We certainly do appreciate that.
Thank you.
We are, um, we are as, as transparent as anyone. And you guys do a, a yeoman's job over there, so thank you very much.
Thank you, and I'd like to thank my staff, they've been working hard to get this all in within time.
It was plural, you guys, so, thank you all very much.
I'd be happy to make the motion, the board of county commissioners approve the year-end adjustment included in resolution C-TAC one nine point one nine.
Second.
All right, got a motion on that one, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Again, unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Good job.
All right, uh, promoting safe and stable families program grant award. As Christine and Ed argue who's coming up? Or discuss maybe? So, our director of citizen services, Christine Kay, and our LMB manager, Corey Harding, are joining us this morning. Ladies, good morning.
Commissioners, this morning, we're seeking approval to submit, um, the FY20 Safe and Stable Families Grant. Um, Maryland DHR, Department of Human Resources provides federal funding to the Carroll County Department of Social Services to assist families at risk of being separated from their children. The Safe and Stable Grant is managed by the Carroll County Local Management Board through contracts with the Carroll County Youth Service Bureau and Human Service Programs. And we do have representatives from those programs here today. I know Joyce Tierney, um, from HSP, Scott Yard from HSP are in the audience if you have any questions, and Mindy Yard from YSB. The Safe and Stable Grant serves sixty-seven, um, at-risk and low-income families each year. I, I think your briefing paper says forty-three, that was an error on our part, it was sixty-three. We had only included one program in the briefing paper.
Sixty-three or sixty-seven?
So, I'm sorry?
Did you say sixty-three, sixty-seven?
Sorry, sixty-seven.
Okay.
We said forty-three in the briefing paper, sixty-seven, right.
Got you.
And these programs serve, um, target children from birth to seven years old. And we're, uh, the local management board provides program monitoring and fiscal oversight. The total, um, grant award is a hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars. If you have any questions, Corey and programs are here if you have any questions.
I guess the only question is sixty-seven, is that the target number? Or, or is there a waiting list that if we had more money through this grant, we'd be able to serve more that are eligible to be served?
Right, if we had more money, we'd be able to serve, do, is that correct? Do you want to, if, if there were more dollars, we'd be able to serve more families?
Correct, yeah.
Correct.
So, with that said, how much more money? I mean, is this a formula-driven? Or is this the grant that we received, you know, just, that's how much we received? And if we went after more money, we'd be serving more within the community? Therefore, should we be trying to go after a larger grant?
This is the last year for this round of funding.
Okay.
So, next year for FY21, when the grant becomes available, we could certainly explore whether there is more funding. This amount has been in place for quite some time. So, um, this is money that comes down from the state, ultimately it starts at the federal government. So, I'm not sure that, that there is more money, but certainly when the new, the new round of funding comes out, we can explore whether it's, you know, whether we have the capacity to do that and, and whether there's more funding available.
When you say quite some time, is that five years, ten years?
Um, Safe and Stable has been since two thousand and eleven, I believe.
Okay, so we're going on about ten years?
Yes, with, with a flat funding.
That's awesome.
It has never increased, though, the dollar has never increased. Um, so it's been that, that same dollar amount for ten years, so.
So, okay, okay, thanks.
Is, is there a waitlist?
For PCIT, the Carroll County Service Bureau, I mean, there is.
Hit, hit the, hit the mic.
Yes.
Just, just in.
That's heard of one.
No, it's on.
Okay. Um, there's always a waitlist for the PCIT room at the Carroll County Youth Service Bureau and that's more because of space, we only have one room. But, it's a minimal waitlist, um, right now, we have two on our waitlist.
Okay.
Okay. So, when the, when the, when the grant comes out for FY21, we'll, um, look at it, speak with the programs and determine, you know, if we need to apply for more.
Right, I mean, the, the whole purpose in this, in this dialogue is to ensure that we understand the problem. We, you know, uh, create the requirement to provide a solution to that problem. And then with that, what are the resources necessary, whether it's space, uh, in a building or it's actual funds? And then we say, okay, these are the resources we're receiving. If it's a hundred percent, then we're going to solve the hundred percent problem. If it's eighty percent, we still have a twenty percent, a couple of folks on waiting list that we still need to address and be aware of. And may not be able to be addressed today, but next year, going after a larger grant or we'll be able to fix that problem. So, I appreciate it, thanks, sir.
All right, any other questions on this grant? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Or make it myself.
I move the board of commissioners approve submission of an application and accept the twenty, FY20 grant for Safe and Stable Families Program.
Second.
All right, got a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, thank you. All right, next on the list is acceptance of the Youth and Family Engagement Program Grant Award.
Corey's going to take this one.
Okay. So, uh, we are seeking your approval for the FY20 Youth and Family Engagement Program. Carroll County Youth Service Bureau, in partnership with the Carroll County Department of Juvenile Services, provides behavioral health case management services for youth and their families at risk of or currently involved in Maryland's Department of Juvenile Services. Carroll County Youth Service Bureau staff assesses the needs of you, of the youth and their families to facilitate referrals to community services identified during their intake and enrollment process. In FY, um, nineteen, fifty youth were served in this program. Um, the intake services are, or the services are provided for approximately three to six months. And, um, these families are also eligible to receive services at the Youth Service Bureau themselves, so they're able to participate in the services, um, the behavioral health services through the Youth Service Bureau or through other agencies in the community. Uh, the Carroll County Local Management Board provides the monitoring, the programmatic monitoring and the fiscal oversight for the program. And the funding for this program is eighty thousand dollars, which comes from the Department of Juvenile Services. And Tiffany Macemore and Jessica Cypress are here from the Youth Service Bureau if you have any questions for them.
And this is with no county match?
Correct.
And, um, I've seen this program in action and the behavioral aspect, uh, is, is tremendous here and what you're doing for a lot of kids. I've seen the results of some of these, so, uh, I think it's tremendous what you're doing on that.
Does it, this program, do I read, read this, hope, could be wrong? You're taking, you're looking at people that need services and you're connecting them to the service?
Yes.
But, you're not, that, not providing the service yourself, you're just connecting to the services that are already out there, correct?
Yes, yeah, so the case management is the piece that connect, is connects them to the, and so that services may be at the Youth Service Bureau or they may be at other agencies in the community. And it's really a prevention to keep kids from.
Right, but the idea of this particular thing is to connect.
Yes.
People that need the service with the service.
Correct, and looking at the family, when kids have juvenile service involvement, looking at their whole family and what their family may need, rather than just simply focusing solely on the child.
So, my guess, I'm just guessing, but for eighty thousand dollars, we're connecting a lot of people?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to move that board of commissioners accept a word of the FY20 Youth and Family Engagement Program Grant.
I'll second that.
All right, motion in second for this grant, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
All right, uh, approval to submit section eight management assessment program certification.
Danielle Yates is going to join me, bureau chief of housing. And Paul Moffett, manager for Bureau of Housing. Commissioners, each year HUD requires all public, um, housing agencies to submit data that HUD then uses to rate the agency's performance based on fourteen different indicators. Um, this is called the Section Eight Management Assessment Program or CMAP. And Danielle is going to give you the details on this particular.
Good morning, commissioners. As Christine said, the Section Eight Management Assessment Program, which is known as CMAP, is a tool that HUD uses remotely to measure our public housing authority's performance and administration of the Housing Choice Voucher Program. This checklist, along with a single audit, which is performed by our county's independent auditor, and a data review through HUD's national database, determine our public housing authority's annual rating. HUD will assign each public housing authority a rating annually of either high, standard, or troubled. Historically, our public housing authority has always received a high-performance rating. And there are no changes within this past fiscal year, which would indicate that our agency would not receive that high rating again. The required CMAP certification is just a checklist that consists of fourteen areas or indicators that are reviewed to determine the, the public housing authority's performance. Our CMAP score for fiscal year eighteen was one hundred points out of one hundred.
Hundred? Pardon?
No bonus points?
This certification is required.
Is that an A?
It is required annually, um, in an electronic submission that we have to submit on or before August twenty-ninth. So, today, we are requesting approval to submit that CMAP certification and we'd like to answer any questions that you may have in regards.
We, we haven't seen this report, right?
What it is, is this is the self-certifying portion of it. We can actually send you, it's just a checklist with the rating that we've done. Um, we can actually forward that, a copy of that checklist that we, um, hit the send button on. And what will happen from there is HUD will then review their parts through the database and what is, um, turned in through our FDS submission, which is our financial data submission, to review all three of those components to come up with an actual score.
Last year, we came back, once, once we received the score from HUD, um, we came back and gave you, informed you of the score that we received.
Okay.
This is just like part one of this submission.
Commissioner Weaver, you want to see that?
I, I would like to see it, what we're talking about here before we vote on it.
Send that to you this afternoon.
Sure.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, the, the very fact that we've scored a hundred out of a hundred at this point.
That, that's great, but what, what are we voting on? We need to see.
We need to see.
Well, but right now, we're just voting on submitting it, so when we get the score back from HUD, then we can dive a little deeper if you'd like, but, yeah, why don't you provide that to us, just so we can follow along with the, yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, I appreciate it as well, and I guess my question is, why is, why are we needing to approve the submission, and not just from the department itself? I appreciate it, and again, it's a testament to the transparency and the involvement of us, you know, going back and forth and having these conversations, but...
With every public housing authority, there is a board, and the board happens to be the county commissioners.
Got it.
So, the board must approve that submission.
Okay, no, I appreciate it, thanks.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so you'll provide that for us, and we can follow along in the journey?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
Make a motion, the Board of Commissioners approves submission of the CMAP report. Second.
Nicely done on that acronym, I'll be air freshener. All right, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, guys. Substance use recovery treatment services and residential triage beds.
I'm waiting for some folks, sorry.
Scene change.
Wait, wait a minute.
Keeping with this morning, a scene change.
Wait a minute, is that Ed Singer over there?
No.
What'd you say, I've been missing in action or something?
Not with that shirt on.
Hey, how you like that setup right there, huh? All right, Christine?
That does say, not taking on our good attorney, so, go ahead.
That was kind of improv, too. With the theme of today, that was improv, I gotta tell you. Christine?
Good morning, I think morning's gonna start.
Start, yes. Carroll County purchasing solicited bids for Citizen Services for the substance use recovery treatment services. This will be services for Buttercup Road and Sykesville Road facilities, both. There was, we received two proposals, one from Maryland Treatment Centers and the other from Transform Care. There was an evaluation committee that went over the financials and the technical proposals, and it was decided that Maryland Treatment Centers was the highest-ranked facility and for, to cover this services, and we are asked, and they had an annual amount of four thousand, four hundred ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred fifteen dollars, and this is within the budget, and Christine is going to give you some summary of the project.
Yes, thank you. I was gonna give you a brief history of kind of how we ended up here. Last June, on June twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen, Citizen Services and Health Department presented to the Board of Commissioners the history of RSS and the future plans to address the needs of more treatment beds in the county. To summarize, kind of the beginning of RSS, if you will, in two thousand eight, the county and Health Department, excuse me, with the assistance of the Alcohol and Drug Abuse Administration, which is now the Behavioral Health Authority, prepared an RFP for what is Level three-point one and three-point three substance use disorder treatment. These services are considered low-to-moderate level clinically-monitored treatment services. At that time, a treatment vendor was selected, and services began in two thousand eight. The county has been fully funding this program since its inception in oh-eight. Also, keep in mind that the county has a thirty-year obligation to operate as a substance abuse facility down there. In early twenty-twelve, the Commissioners approved moving forward with a conversion from a treatment facility to housing and case management as a cost-saving manager, and that is what we all know as RSS, or Recovery Support Services. Citizen Services and the Health Department at that time worked on a second RFP and selected a vendor to operate the facility. In June of seventeen, the state of Maryland received a Medicaid waiver allowing the state to pay for residential substance use disorder services through Medicaid. So, again, even in twenty-twelve, the county continued to fully fund the services at RSS. Then in twenty-seventeen, the waiver came out, so in eighteen, as I said, we came back for the board about this state change in coverage for residential substance use services. At that time, we also proposed a joint RFP for residential substance use services that would allow us to have one contract for the entire continuum of residential care for substance use disorder. Again, the Commissioners agreed to move forward with this plan. The RFP that we're discussing today requested Levels three-point one, three-point three, three-point five, three-point seven, the Health Department can answer any questions you have about those levels, and withdrawal, and three-point seven withdrawal management residential treatment beds, as well as five to ten triage beds. The residential treatment beds will be funded by Medicaid, while the triage beds are projected to be covered by the State Opioid Response Grant, which is federal funding, for at least two years. After the end of the federal grant, the five to ten triage beds would continue to be funded by the county at the discretion of the Board of County Commissioners. And then the committee was formed, and a vendor has been selected.
So, can I just add a couple of sentences to that? We approached the board about a year ago, and said we wanted to pursue this, it was because we needed, we felt like we needed crisis beds to put people so we could immediately get them into treatment. And this was the concept we pitched, and we didn't have the federal grant money available at that time. What our pitch was, was we would start treatment services at both RSS and Shoemaker, and those would all be billed by the vendor to Medicaid, and then we would look at potentially using the money that the county was spending on RSS for these triage beds. Well, since then, we've been able to apply for and receive a grant from the state, passed through from, it's a federal grant, passed through from the state to fund these triage beds, so the county essentially won't have to pick up the tab for that for the next couple of years. The concept was, when I pitched this, there were, three of you were here at the time, and two of you weren't, but the concept wasn't, what we were told by the board was, make sure you keep the cost at or less than what the cost of running RSS was at the time, and you guys were okay with us moving forward with it in that direction. So, I guess I just kinda wanted to throw that in there, is how this whole thing got kicked off, and what the need really was, we've talked about need for crisis services, we've got a mobile crisis team, and now we've got a place we can put people, this would give us a place where we can put people who are in crisis if there's not an immediate treatment slot for them. So, that's what we're looking to do.
Is five to ten beds enough addition?
I think that it is, because the triage beds are only intended to be a, something where somebody's gonna be there for five to ten days before we get them into a treatment program, so it's not like, these are long-term beds. These are beds that are gonna turn over, and we're gonna have people into other levels of treatment after, this is just an opportunity to, what we're essentially looking to do is, if somebody decides that they wanna get into treatment on Monday, and there's not a treatment slot available for them until Thursday, we wanna give them a safe place to be, so they don't go back and use again. Now, we can't force people to go there, but, and that often gets tricky, somebody has to be willing to enter into treatment, but if that person's ready for treatment, we don't wanna send them back to an unsafe environment, and the possibility they're gonna fall back into using again. If, this gives us someplace essentially where we could hold them until they can get into...
So, you're saying five to ten beds, and your professional opinion is enough triage beds for our community? Do we have enough beds, total space, supported in RSS and Shoemaker House right now?
You're talking about for residential treatment?
For the services that they provide between three-point one and three-point seven services.
Sue, I guess, where'd you go? So, you have the statistical data.
Yeah, we need to get to the mic soon.
I'm gonna say no, because Shoemaker Center originally has a CON for thirty-nine beds, it's only running at twenty-two right now, because of a physical location change that we had to make, because of the state's change in accreditation. So, when they went from regulation, and regulating the beds, to accreditation, when we made that move, we were not able to meet accreditation, be compliant with accreditation. So, they moved us to a location that was compliant, but it's only twenty-two beds. So, we're about twenty beds short of what our actual need is.
So, if we were able to build out from the RSS building, an additional twenty-two beds, would that be a good thing?
Yes.
So, one idea, again, is going after a bond bill, going after state money, to see if we can expand that building as a capital project. Not saying we can, you know, but, again, kind of the discussion I had earlier, you know, with the grants, what is the problem? What's the solution? What are the resources, if it's a priority to us, that we are willing to apply to fix that problem and come up with the appropriate solution? I'm not saying that is the solution, I'm saying, but that's something that I think we should be, have the conversation about, and that's why this discussion, to me, is very important, this is prob, well, it's a very high priority to me, and we need to resource our community to continue to fight the battle against this problem, and...
Ed and I have been working with the state to try to find another location that would be suitable.
But we're not there yet, so what I wanna do is, I wanna leverage all our resources to include us, to get engaged with the state and delegation and everybody that we can, you know, we're gonna be down in Mako next week, meeting with a whole lot of folks, and I wanna be able to target conversations to at least get us into a position where we're gonna come up with a solution to fix the problem, so. And I do, I apologize, and I'm not taking away anything you're doing, I applaud all the work you're doing. I want you to know that we are someone for you to leverage as well, and I really believe that we're just not meeting the mark. I think we're doing a lot of really great things, and I'm very proud of the things we're doing, but as long as there's still one requirement out there, I wanna come up with that solution, so.
And Commissioner, I just wanna say, thanks for that, and I do think the, I mean, the facilities, the size of the facility and all that, that's an issue, but I think what we're talking about today, and I just kinda wanted to clarify that, is the services that we're gonna provide.
I understand.
While we'd all like to have more beds, I think having these services for the folks that are in our community is what I'd like to focus on here, and we're certainly gonna have conversations about what we would do facility-wise, but I do think that's, it's a related issue, but it's not one that we're asking you guys to decide on today.
No, it's not to specify task on here, but it's definitely part of this, you know, the situation.
The overall complicated puzzle.
And I'm, I'm telling you, every time I'm gonna get the opportunity to talk about this, and if there's a good segue to do it, I'm gonna do it, because I want to leverage our, the folks that, you know, can help us find the resources, in other words, the money, to understand that this is a continued requirement, and we have a continued requirement in our county and the community for more beds and more facilities to taking care of the folks in our community, so.
Agreed.
Okay, so, let's bring it back to this particular subject now. You have a question, Commissioner Boucher?
I just wanna make sure, my understanding of this, Mr. Singer, is that we're basically filling a void in the system that you see needs to be addressed, the entry-level part of it?
Yes, and essentially what it is, is it's, this is, this gives us an opportunity to help folks enter into the treatment system without having to wait to have someplace to start.
And you've recognized, through your experience, that this is a need that we have to address?
It's one we've been discussing at the opioid senior policy group, and I've been discussing with our elected officials for some time, and I just think this is, we've been putting a lot of pieces of this puzzle together to make the continuum of services as seamless as possible here in Carroll County, and this is another step in that direction, and the hospital is hugely excited about it, because, I mean, they really don't have anything to do with these folks, because they don't have substance use treatment services at our hospital center, they do the best they can with them in the emergency department, but when they leave the emergency department, if they don't have a safe place to go, where they're not gonna wind up back in the environment they were in and potentially use again, we're doing the folks a disservice.
This is an extremely complex issue to manage, and I think we're all learning as we go.
Right, we've been talking about this at the prior board for quite a while, about getting these, get the right term, triage beds up and running, because they're, I think, and we've mentioned this before, how essential they are, because if someone wants to go in treatment today, and there's no place to put them, they might not be ready tomorrow. When there's a bed ready, they might have already used, or overdosed or something of that sort. So, we've been working on this for a while, so I commend you for bringing this forward and putting it out there, and I think it's a great, great step for the seamlessness that we need, for someone wants to go into treatment, the bed, until the treatment's open, you know, and the intensive outpatient afterwards and all that stuff, so we're working towards something that I think we've been discussing for years here at Board of Commissioners, so I do appreciate that.
The current vendor is Mount Manor, so your recommendation is that we move from Mount Manor, when their contract's up, to Maryland Treatment Centers.
Same vendor.
What's that?
Yeah, it's the same, it's the same vendor.
It is the same.
Mount Manor and Maryland Treatment.
It's the same vendor?
Mount Manor is part of Maryland Treatment Centers.
Okay, I apologize, thank you. Good, okay.
Okay, I'll make the motion, the Board of Commissioners, a word to contract for substance use recovery treatment services and residential triage beds at Maryland Treatment Centers Incorporated.
Second. Okay. The only question I have is, I guess procedural, we didn't get to see the scoring, and I know you all did that, what was, why continue with them and not go with Transform? I mean, was there a significant difference in level of care and what they can provide? That's my only question, so...
The individual who was the evaluator scored summary sheets, they actually, Maryland Treatment scored higher technically and financially, so that's why we are in favor of Maryland Treatment.
Okay, okay, that's, yeah, all right.
Thank you for your next question.
Okay, any other questions on this one? I've got a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys for your work on that. All right, we're moving from treatment beds to tot lots, Mr. Daggett's.
This is specific in reference to Deer Park. Maureen, you're still on, you're still on?
Yes, I'm still here.
Are these tot lots adult-friendly?
They have a weight limit.
I'm out.
Yeah, it's like that. Did you see J.J. Watt riding the bike the other day, and broke the guy's, the little kid's bike seat?
Oh, yeah, it was on the paper.
Yeah, anyway. Hey, sorry, I got going off here, I'm back, okay? Hey, how y'all doing?
He probably bought the kid a new bike.
Yeah, he did buy, yeah.
This is to have a tot lot replacement at Deer Park, and we are here for, hopefully for you to award it to PlayCor Wisconsin, which is actually Game Time, which will actually give the actual work to Cunningham Recreation, for a hundred and forty-nine thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars and fifty cents. This is a U.S. Communities awarded contract, and it was competitively bid, and it should provide all the labor, equipment, materials, and delivery to install this new tot lot at Deer Park. So, we are, and it is within the budget, and we are asking for your approval.
This is part of our ongoing efforts to maintain our existing park infrastructure. This unit's about twenty years old and due for replacement, and the vast majority of the funding, about ninety percent of the funding for this is coming from program open space.
What is included in the tot lot? Is this, we're just replacing the same thing that was there with something, with the very same product?
Very similar, very similar.
No additional fun things?
No, this is not a larger unit, this is not, you know, an expansion of the area, it's taking out what was there and replacing it with new, current equipment.
Safer, you know, because we all got dramatically injured on the playgrounds that we all played on.
They are used. We need to go to Union Bridge and see their playgrounds.
Yeah, I think I did hit my head at one point, but that probably answers a lot of questions, anyway.
Is that what it's true?
Didn't have to ask that one.
Yeah, that's true. New surface, it's a new improved surface, too?
Yes, new surfacing, every new playground that we're putting in now, we're using that port-in-place surface, there's a lot of savings with the maintenance, and it does provide a more consistent and safer surface underneath the equipment.
What is the lifespan for that port-in-place surface?
It should last as long as the playground itself.
So, about twenty years, that we're looking at? That's good.
I'll move the Board of Commissioners award a contract for the new replacement tot lot at Deer Park to Cunningham Recreation, the amount of one hundred forty-nine thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
Since Dennis' will be playing in it.
Okay, I got a motion in second, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right, Critical Farms Program, we're gonna exercise the option to purchase... We're going to exercise the option to purchase Kevin J. Henley. So JP...
Say it through here, about this one.
Yeah, JP rolls up here with us, and Deb Bowers, our Director of Agland Preservation.
Morning Commissioners.
Folks, good morning.
Hot mornings around the corner.
So this is for final approval of a Critical Farms Program applicant at 1,000 West Liberty Road in District Five.
Wait, wait a minute. Is that, does that, does that say five?
District Five.
What?
Just, just understand, five.
There's got to be a typo.
Yes. No, I'm sorry. It is correct.
Feeling good.
We don't see that often.
So I'm just going to give us a, a brief refresher on the Critical Farms Program for the benefit of the public as well as the Commissioners. We, the Critical Farms Program is our premier program, which helps farmers buy a farm. It provides 52.5% of the purchase price or the appraised value, whichever is lower. It requires the recipient to sell an easement to the State of Maryland, and then the county is reimbursed or may contribute 40%, just depending on the funding and the, the ranking. To date, we have assisted 65 purchases. This will be the 66th. Acres preserved to date, 7,587. And I don't know if you all have seen this map before. If you look closely into this map, you'll see green parcels that are outlined in yellow. Those are, are Critical Farms. And as you can see, they are in the east, west, and north of the county. This will be the first one this far south. So I thought you would be interested in seeing the distribution of these farms. We do have very good farms over in the Hampstead area and Manchester that we've helped with, and plenty of farms out in the Tawny Town region. So the Henley property is 80.73 acres. Its appraised fair market value was $710,500, and therefore the purchase assistance will be $373,000 and some change at 46.20 per acre. Now, when this goes down to mouth and we get reimbursed, that per acre amount ultimately will be something more like $3,500 an acre, so. This is an aerial view of the property. As you can see, it's right next to South Carroll High School. It is a very good farm. It has Class Two and Three soils, excellent for crops. There are other farms in the area to the north there, and we don't know in the future. Maybe some of them will be inspired to come and, and see us. So there are a few other preserved farms in the area, one right up the road, preserved in the state program, and several fairly large county easements in that area. So we do have farming, active farming in this area, even though it is quite close to the designated growth area. So we are asking for final approval at this time.
I'll tell you, I personally think it's gorgeous area, you know, especially that area and then up Arthur Shipley. So I'm very happy to see this happening in District Five, so. And is this the first we've seen in District Five in the county?
Um, in, in a, in a long time, yes, very long time, yes.
I'd like to make the motion to move that Board of Commissioners exercise Critical Farm Program Option to Purchase for Kevin J. Henley.
Second.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Weber, I can't believe you don't have anything to say. It's in your wheelhouse, baby. Come on.
Well, this is great.
We're drinking the cooling.
District Five.
We're drinking the cooling.
Again with the program now. I think this is great, so, yeah, I, you guys said it all.
All right. Okay, got a motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. Well done.
Appreciate the hard work you guys put into preserving our county's heritage.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
You're welcome.
It's good to see the wealth being spread. You know, it's, sometimes it's not all about District One. Most of the time it is, but, you know.
That's true.
I think eventually if I move, I'm going to wind up in your district.
I, I think this is a misconception.
No, no, it's not. Next on our agenda.
Just because you say it doesn't mean it's true.
All right, Grant Application and Award Acceptance for Carroll County Outfall Remediation. Oh, hi. How you all doing? Glad you could appear so quick.
Stay right ahead.
Ladies, good morning.
Good morning. Good morning Commissioners. We're here today to ask your permission to submit a grant application to the Chesapeake Bay Trust for Outfall Restoration Engineering. Kelly's going to give you some background on the project. It is a, I guess, a project that we've been working in partnership with the Department of Public Works on, the Bureau of Roads, in identifying pub, or problem outfalls, where they've had consistent complaints, where we've received complaints in our stormwater program, that we can identify these outfalls and come up with potential solutions. And it's our hope that by compiling this plan, we can submit to the Chesapeake and Atlantic Coastal Bay Trust Fund in 2020 for construction funds.
For our viewers, could you elaborate and explain what outfalls are in case there's anyone out there that's not familiar with it?
So we're looking at cross culverts that run underneath county roadways. We're looking at storm drain outfalls that might outfall high up in a subdivision, you know, that run through a drainage and utility easement, but may go across a private property owner's yard. So these are areas that, like I said, the Roads Department has received complaints on. We receive calls. There are also outfalls that have been identified through the county's stream corridor assessment. When we've gone out, or staff from the Bureau of Resource Management has gone out and walked streams, where we see outfalls with a lot of erosion, a lot of sediment transport. And by going in and stabilizing these outfalls, it'll help us reduce nutrients and sediment loads.
To put it in perspective, ask me, how many outfalls does this county have? I know it's a lot. I know they're inventorying it, but just to let people know, it's a lot of them. Is there any ballpark figure?
I have no idea.
Thousands?
We're looking at 75.
You have some help.
Did you want to say something, Joe?
It magically shows up. Maybe, yeah. I'll, I'll help. But yeah, it's, it's well over a thousand outfalls. We have over about a million feet of, we have about a million, linear feet of piping that goes on our roadways throughout the county that, you know, that's, that's what we're trying to address here, is 75 of the, of the thousands, so.
Thank you. That puts it in perspective for people to understand what you guys are faced with.
And there's a lot of these. They're causing problems, especially last year and this year, that we didn't even know about before, so. They're out there. I know I get calls on a few of them, and we do handle a lot of them.
Get a lot of calls. Kelly, you got more on this?
Just, we're requesting approval to submit the application for $75,000. So that will be used to fund the engineering. Right now, we're doing, we're going to put out an RFP for an outfall study. So we're going to study approximately 75 of these problem outfalls, and then they're going to be prioritized based on what we can do to fix them, how much the nutrient load can be reduced, and all of that goes to meet the requirements of our National Pluton Discharge Elimination System permit. So once we have that prioritized list, probably 25 of them will be sent out to be engineered for best management practices or however we can remedy the situation. So that's what we're here to ask.
And the 75, you're going to study the 75, she got like the most complaints on? Is that how you're looking at that?
Yeah, that's how we, we've got the list.
Does that make sense?
The, the match is 75,000, 50,000. Is that...
50,000 is for the study that we're going to do right now to prioritize the 75.
So that's not, that's not the match? You're going after 75,000 with the county not matching any dollar amount?
The engineering may be more. It just depends what we come up with and what size, what kind of projects are being done to remediate.
But I, I guess my question though is, going after this grant, is there a match requirement in going after this?
There is not for this one. It helps to have one, so we're putting the outfall study up as our match.
Okay, okay, good.
So, I think this is something that's critically needed. What happens if you don't get the grant? Or maybe my question is, what are the odds? You know, have we, we haven't gone after this before.
No, this is, and it's a new kind of project for this, so.
Have you, have you seen any, anything that would give you a, you know, a look into the future that this is a good thing and it would attract some attention and say, yep, go Carroll? I don't know. Yes?
We're hopeful, I guess, because the state highway administration has changed their protocols, which gives us more credit for doing this kind of thing. So we're hopeful that that, everybody's been talking about this more, so.
Okay, good.
We're going to have to deal with this anyway.
Well, yeah, that's kind of where I was going with...
We're trying to solve multiple problems with doing this.
That's great.
Yeah, if we can do with, with a grant like this, we're, we're ahead of the game. I guess that's where I was kind of heading for that. So that's good stuff. All right.
I move that the Board of County Commissioners approve the submission of the grant application acceptance of the award to the Chesapeake Bay Trust Watershed Assistance Grant Program.
Second.
Any other questions? I'm hopeful to see you back here for the acceptance of the grant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Now we're going to talk about our 2020 General Assembly and the legislation that we'd like to, to throw at the folks in the lovely little city of Annapolis.
So there was, there was only one in, that came out of staff, and that really came from a discussion that the, an open session that the Board of County Commissioners had with regard to the SOLs, and you'll have to tell me what it stands for, on grant. So if you would like, maybe Christine can start with that?
Sure.
And then you guys can...
Yep. Christine, why don't you come up? Mike, in fact, Mike, why don't you come up as well? Because we're going to be relying on you as we go through this too. Everybody knows Mike Fowler, our legislative liaison.
He's very well-known.
Yeah, so...
Infamous.
Infamous. I just go to the airboat.
So, you know, the other thing to remember here is now, this is August, and, you know, those lovely folks will arrive in Annapolis in January. So it takes this amount of time to get ourselves together in order for them to know what our priorities are so that they can hit the ground running down there. So that's why, for those folks who are going, wait, what? What are you doing? So, anyway, Christine.
Well, and if I, for, not for you guys, but for everyone else watching, we will be meeting with the delegation in a joint meeting on the 29th, so.
Correct.
This is in preparation for that.
Yep. Okay, so...
Okay, good morning again. Celine Steckel joining, joining us, Bureau Chief of Aging and Disabilities. A couple, about a month or so ago, we came and presented our annual grant for the Senior Assisted Living Group Home Subsidy Program. The Senior Assisted Living Group Home Subsidy Program is a state program that provides subsidies to low-income older adults to assist with the cost of services provided in assisted living facilities. Each year in Carroll County, approximately 10 to 15 low-income adults, 62 and older, have been served through this program. Subsidies are provided for services such as shelter meals, housekeeping, personal care services, and 24-hour supervision. The subsidy amount has a maximum cap of $650. This cap has not been increased since the inception of the program nearly 13 years ago, and has not kept pace with the growing cost of assisted, assisted living care. That's 650 a month. Assisted living facilities typically cost between $2,500 and $6,000 a month. So even with the subsidy, some, the individuals that were serving can't meet the, the whole amount of their monthly fee. Up until three years ago, Carroll, we have allotted, allocated subsidy slots filled to maintain a waiting list of potential clients. However, as longer-tenured subsidy clients came off the subsidy for medical or financial reasons, finding eligible candidates has been difficult. This issue is a hot topic. I'm sure you'll hear about it at Mako. It's been addressed during AAA director calls for the past several years. The Maryland Association of Area Agencies on Aging, or the M4A, recommended in FY20 that the subsidy cap be increased. However, there was no proposed legislation drafted for the FY20 legislative session. There have been current, more current, or more recent discussions, I should say, have taken place with the Maryland Department of Aging, reporting that they are working on proposed legislation for '21 to increase the amount of the subsidy. However, there is, so the subsidy may increase, but the amount of money AAA's receive for the program most likely will not increase. So if the subsidy increases, then jurisdictions will end up serving less people because we'll have to meet what, that cap of the new subsidy. Currently, we have 11 of our 17 allocated subsidy slots filled and continue to aggressively market the program to enroll new applicants. But again, it's been difficult because of the subsidy amount. Every jurisdiction in the state is having the same problems. I know Celine just came from an M4A meeting this week where this was a topic of discussion, and like I said, it will be, it's one of those topics that you'll probably hear a lot about. Any questions?
So, so are you, are you focusing on a specific way in which to get this accomplished just for us? Or are you more focused on trying to get the state to, to, what, what's your, what would you like to see us or our legislative folks do, I guess?
I think that if we work collaboratively on a statewide effort to change this legislation would be what we would recommend, because I think that's the only way it's going to happen. Because it is, it's state funding.
Right.
The other piece is, just so you're aware, from our perspective, I had, we went back and looked since January, because we're trying to understand how many people are applying, how many people are not, not able to, even if they're approved financially and medically for the program, how many of those people aren't able to accept the subsidy because it's still not enough to help them move in based on their other income to support it? And we, over, since January 1st, we've had 14 applications that have come back. We've reviewed them. We were able to add six clients onto the program, which got us up to the 11 where we are now. But there were also an additional six individuals that let us know they couldn't accept the subsidy because they could not afford to move into any of the assisted living facilities with that amount. It was not enough to supplement their income. So that, that's a, that's a large turn, turnaround and decline for the program.
This is 62 and older.
This is 62 and older, and, and the group homes, the assisted livings that they're eligible for would be 16 beds or less. They're the smaller assisted livings that this is supporting.
Okay.
And our projection is this group's going to keep growing.
Correct.
Age-wise and everything else, so...
And I know you've touched on this a little bit, Eric, so, you know, we're...
Is there a shortage of facilities?
It's not that there's a shortage of facilities. I think that Carroll County, although it, we could enhance the number of beds that are available, however, there are beds available. It's just that the beds available are facilities that have a higher cost. And so the more services, the more à la carte services that are available, the more comprehensive services at assisted living facilities. Some assisted living facilities provide an activities coordinator. They provide transportation. And so the, depending on what is offered at that facility, obviously their costs will be, be higher than other facilities. So dependent upon what the needs are, or what the individual, you know, their, their basic needs will be met at all the facilities as, as regulated.
Yeah, and I'm learning as I go with this, thanks to you all and your department, enlightening me on what you're faced with. And ultimately, we as a body are faced with it as well and need to back you up on it.
And we are fortunate in Carroll County, our assisted living facility providers work with us very well. And they have done great work with us to try to maneuver folks that are close to income qualifying into these, into their facilities to, to get them into the facilities. However, now that the costs are getting higher and higher, it's not as easy for them to say that they would take that loss.
Okay. All right, well, I know Mako has this on their radar too. The issue with that is it's sort of a subsection of the entire Health Department and Senior Assisted category that they're looking at as one of the initiatives that they're going after. So, we'll keep that on our radar, and I know, Mike, you certainly will. And perhaps we'll, not, I know we'll hear more about it, as you say, next week. So, we'll, we'll kinda surround ourselves with the info we're getting from our colleagues, and then maybe we'll go at it that way.
Okay.
And I've got, we, we've got an Initiatives meeting at some point next week, and I'll make sure that it's on, it stays on that radar too. We're down from, we, Mako focuses on like three or four major issues each year, and right now, we've started with like 35, and we're down to 28. So, we're getting there. So, I'll try to make sure that this stays on the radar too. Because having that group behind it would, would be, would be a good, a good thing, especially if we wanna focus on it at the state level, count, you know, statewide, so. Okay. Any other questions on this? We'll, we'll, we'll tag-team this and we'll make sure that we... Are you going to Mako?
Yes.
Okay, I thought you were. All right. Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thanks, yeah.
And, and if I may, before you start talking amongst yourselves with whatever interests you have, the-
We've already been doing that.
Although the Liquor Board is, is really an independent state-
Right.
-agency, they are, and they, and they can technically go directly to the state delegation for any legislation they want. They have traditionally come to you and, and at least informed you and put you in the loop and gotten your opinion. They came last year for a couple, three different legislative meetings, and they're interested in at least one other this year.
Right.
Came up late in the legislative session last year, so you've heard about this. It's a 2:00 AM closing, moving and closing for, I guess, bars and restaurants to 2:00 AM. So, they are meeting next week. They're not 100% sure yet. It hasn't been decided. But they meet next week, and so they may be asking our delegation to change the state law so that they can close. But I just wanted you guys to be aware that that's something they're still thinking about.
Okay.
And it may come up. And, and if, and if you guys are amenable, they could maybe join us briefly at the joint delegation meeting.
Yeah, we've typically allowed that before, because, you know, we, we need to make sure that they, everybody knows legislatively that, that, you know, out of the gate, they got all the issues. So, yeah, I, unless anybody has a problem with that, I think they, they should be there. I think there was another thing that came up. Dick, you talked to me briefly. There was something about the number of licenses that were required within the distance.
Population.
Yeah.
That actually, they're, they'll be talking about that on Wednesday too.
Okay.
That if they were to make, there are two issues there. And, and, but if that, if they were to change that, that, those are local rules, and they don't need to go to the state, they don't need state legislation for that, so.
Okay, but does that have to be?
Nothing to do with us. It's just them.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Well, that's rude.
Yeah, I know. But it's nice not to have to make a decision every day.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, so they will be, they actually have, they're meeting next Wednesday.
Okay.
And then, there's a population issue, and then there's a number of seats in a restaurant issue that are required currently under our local rules before you can have a liquor license. And so, those two issues are both being brought before the Liquor Board-
Okay.
-Board of Licensed Commissioners, properly said, next week.
All right.
But, and they will also be discussing this legislation.
Good.
So, we will know after, after next week whether they wanna move forward with that.
Okay, it's important for us to pay attention to that second part because as we continue to see the increase of breweries and the tasting rooms, that's coming into play here. And, you know, a couple of them could be shut out as it, because of the fact that that, that's in play.
It's changing, and the fact is, also, people are asking for more and more. And once they get a, a license, then they wanna increase it sometimes to do things, and that becomes a problem.
Okay.
Yeah, and as we know, liquor is very highly regulated by the state, so.
Yeah.
The only other thing that, 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 the 2:00 AM closing is, is, is a higher likelihood of legislative requests. There is some potential for a, there's a residency requirement. It's now two years. And to live in the county before you can be the resident agent for a liquor store or a liquor establishment. And that may change, but they're telling me that the state as a whole is looking at changing that because there was some litigation in Tennessee, I believe, that possibly impacts our resident, the state's, not our Carroll County, but the state's residency requirement, as it's currently written. So, that's probably something you may or may not hear about, but that's probably something the state will take out.
Okay.
I'm done. Sorry, thank you.
Yeah, that's good. All right. Why don't we just go right down the line? Dennis?
Start on that side.
Okay.
I hate to go first.
I know, okay. So, let's make sure that, that Mike has what we have been discussing over the last several months on his radar, so that he can begin to prepare for it too. In case he hasn't heard, Mike pays attention pretty well, so he's probably heard it all, but.
I tried.
Right. Eric, you've got?
Yes, sir. Do we need Mike to brief us first, or?
I don't think so. I think, no, this is just us, and, and he's, you know.
All right, so this is my first go at this particular process. My interest for the county is the potential of redistricting after the census and how that'll impact Carroll County. Because at present, we have an 11-member delegation in the General Assembly with only four of them as residents of the county. So, technically, the way it stands is out-of-county members of our delegation could technically outvote their residential delegation. So, what I'm looking at is the potential for us to influence through a state constitutional amendment, how the districts are drawn in the future. I have suggested to the governor in meetings with him and in letters that we should look at a citizen convention on a nonpartisan ballot where citizens would actually draw the boundaries for both congressional and general assembly districts. He said he is, he is receptive to it. And I think he is receptive to it now, or the fact that the Supreme Court has thrown out the gerrymandering cases that was brought in front of it this year and put it back in the laps of the state legislatures. And consideration of Governor Hogan being a Republican in charge of this potential process as written, I think the General Assembly might have the appetite now, finally, to consider modifications on how those districts are drawn. And I'd like for us to have some sort of legislation that proposes a citizen convention idea of amending, amending the state constitution so that citizens are empowered with the ability to draw the districts outside of the influence of elected officials. That convention would be prohibited of having any members of the General Assembly or Congress and their staff from being in that convention. The whole concept is that politicians shouldn't draw their own boundaries. That since the citizens elect the representatives, the citizens ultimately should also be drawing those boundaries. So, I'd really love to see our delegation pick this up, provide some leadership on the issue, and I think it's ripe for it.
All right. There's a radar item, and we'll see where that goes. We'll, we'll enter into some conversations, see where it goes.
That's the most important thing, is dialogue right now.
Yep, okay.
So, just so it remembers, next, after we come back from Mako, the 22nd, we'll have a, we'll have all these, all these identified in a list, and the board can vote on the ones that they feel as a board initiative they wanna take to the delegation. If something doesn't make the board initiative, of course, an individual commissioner is always welcome to talk, but, but you'd have the power-
That works it well.
You know that process very well. So, that's the way we've always done it, and I think it, it works well. Is that a question? So, we'll, we'll, that's the way we'll, we'll roll with that. Anything else?
No, sir.
Dick?
I would have one that I know has been, I think was brought up last year, but it was the agricultural education for all students. This is, you know, many times today, we're three, four generations removed from people understanding even where the food comes from, how it evolves. And yet, people are making decisions based on some facts, some myths and things. So, what I wanna see is, you know, that each student in our school system at least has some kind of education associated with, you know, where their food comes from, what, what the, what is the value of agriculture to them? Because every great society, when they lose the ability to feed themselves, start to fail. And I think we need to have an understanding of where, where things come from and how they go. And I think the school system has to implement that or be responsible for it, but we have to have the legislation that makes it, makes them responsible for doing that, so.
That's what I'd like to propose.
Statewide.
Yes, statewide, yeah. So, you, that, that's my question, because we always, we wrestle with that. I know they do, when it comes to state curriculum versus local curriculum, and most of the-
Should be statewide.
Okay. We can certainly enter into that conversation with them as well, so. I think it's a great idea.
I think a Mako would get behind that type of legislation.
We've talked about that a little bit as it pertains to history before, if you remember, because we were talking about the Celebrating America thing and the fact that, you know, we're not sure that they, they're getting the history classes that they should. So, we, we touched on that a little bit, but as you know, the, the atmosphere in Annapolis can be quite interesting when it comes to things like that.
The understanding of the number of jobs out there, I mean, there may be only 2% of the population involved in production as such, hand, boots on the ground. But there's, for each two people there, there's about 30-some people in support programs and job opportunities and high-tech jobs. Unbelievable, I mean, that are out there and unfilled in this country. I think there's something like 65,000 unfilled jobs in the country with people with a background that just don't have it, so.
I've heard there was 2% involved in production, but 100% involved in eating.
That makes, yes, they are.
So, if, if, could, could we focus on it locally if it didn't? Do you know, Mike, in working with CCPS, could we?
I, I don't know enough about how their, how structured their curriculum is and how they need to associate that with the state requirements. I know from previous life that, for example, the BGE programs to try to get the local elementary schools in to do, involve with safety programs were always challenged because the schools would say their curriculums were so strict because they're, they're directed toward testing, that there's not a, a lot of room for things that are outside of what's tested. So, so that's what you run up against. Although I think I have seen this proposed in the past. I think maybe Delegate Shoemaker has done this.
Let me explain even maybe a little further to help you answer some of that question. I know I've met with the, some of the new administration here in the school system, and one of the things they want to do is start to infuse some of this into our own curriculum here in Carroll County, which they can, even statewide. I think there's been a lot of push for this. And I think last year, it went through the delegation really well, and somehow in the Senate didn't fare well, if I, if I remember right. So, this is one I think we could garner support for from a lot of areas. Even Baltimore City, I think, is, has a new focus on some of this. So, it's all, I think it's how we get the senators to look at it in the future here. But it's one that I, I think it will be valuable to everybody down the road, so.
Okay.
And locally, we have support, I think, from the school system on this. We'll have to, we'll build on that, but.
So, maybe do a little deep dive into that, Mike, and get, get the thoughts of the folks across the street too, as you're working on that one, to see where, you know, if they get behind us, especially if it doesn't go statewide, whether we could do something locally and just do it, do it ourselves here.
Jason Anderson is who you need to talk to across the valley. He's director of, or not director, of academic issues in-
I mean, from a state perspective, maybe, maybe enabling legislation would be amenable.
Yeah, that might be the way to go. And I can see some of the more rural counties, especially, especially those on the shore and maybe out west, that would get on board with that, so.
Actually, the rural counties aren't the issue as much as some of the suburban, urban counties do.
Right, getting that education to them is certainly more important. I get that. But I'm talking about the effort that we get to push, to push it.
Understand, yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right.
I'm not sure enabling would work. I think if a school district wants to implement this now, they could. I think what you're trying to do is-
Is, is ramp it up so that it is a requirement, right? Okay. All right. Anything else, Dick? Ed?
Done for now.
Okay, I know. Well, and that's the other thing to remember here. We're not setting this in stone today. If you guys think about something between now, and especially with the fact that we're gonna be at Mako next week, there could be things that come up and we go, hey, by the way. So, we're just kinda, right now, it's the initial push here of what we'd like to see. Ed, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there, there's a few things on my mind. One, a few have to do with legislation. A few have to do with potential bond bills. I'm talking to the delegation. So, coupled with the legislation and, you know, septic systems, you know, we highlighted this last session. I think we're going to need to continue to drive that home and ensure that if there is this push to create cesspools just by themselves as non-standard, there has to be funding from the state to allow for our community to move on from cesspool to a septic system. And that's gonna be very difficult. We still have a very large population in the county that we need to address and protect from that. So, that's one of the-
Yeah, no, I was just gonna interject. So, we're always challenged by the bat, you know, the best available. So, I'm wondering, because that's all we hear about, I'm wondering if that would be a part of-
Well, bat systems are not required now, as long as they can have a perk test to, and go to a typical drain field and a gravity flow system.
So, then-
This is, they want to create all cesspools to be-
As non-standard.
To be non-standard. So, now, I, I think maybe as the, as they fail or something, but not just to go in and say, all of a sudden, you're-
That's right.
Okay.
And then that is the issue, because the, that, that's absolutely right. It's the criteria for non-conforming, non-whatever, you know, failed system, or all of these, one through whatever, and then cesspools. And it's like, wait a second. Cesspools, just because they're cesspools, should not be categorized as failed systems. And, and we've had this discussion, but that's something that I believe our delegation needs to continue to highlight as that comes across their table.
And some of them have worked for 60 years and still work.
Absolutely.
Why, why fix it if it's not broke?
And if it's, if it's, doesn't it is failed, then there's gotta be funding to take care of our community.
District One, thanks you. Next.
The continued discussion on solar, and, you know, we, we kinda tabled it last year in the legislative season. I expect it to come back up. So, we have to be clear on our messaging on how we wanna approach solar and, you know, solar technology in the county, tell our story and not have the state come in. Because my concern is, again, Prince George County was highlighting this, and they can come in with a, a path that would not be good for our county. All these issues are priorities to me in the county, and so, so dealing with solar.
Now, if I may, didn't the federal government and-
Zoning. I'm talking about zoning.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And this, this is on the, this is on the minds of us at Mako as well, because there's, there's been some things going on in a couple other jurisdictions, but we-
The federal government has just recently ruled, I think, that the county has no say. It was state would have the say on this, if I'm not mistaken.
And, and the state is putting together a task force, and we gotta make sure we're a part of that task force.
I agree 100%.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yes, currently, after a court of appeals decision, the county's role is limited to participating in the Public Service Commission process when they're considering whether to issue a certificate of convenience to a particular solar, proposed solar project. So, you're, you don't get, you're preempted from zoning, but you do get a seat at the table there to express your, your views as to the efficacy of the project with regard to the underlying zoning and land use in the area.
And key to success is our participation in that task force and not be bullied by some of the other jurisdictions. That, that's key. And we've talked about that as well. Infrastructure, you know, infrastructure dollars, continuing to get the funding for our state roads, whether it's 26, 32, 97, we're gonna be meeting with Secretary Iran. That's a great thing. We do it every year. But again, ensuring that the delegation understands that we have road requirements, and whatever dollars we can pull out of the state in doing that, you know, we're gonna try to do.
Yeah, and the one thing I will say about that is, Mako has decided not to continue to push HURs at this point because we've done it ad nauseam. So, that is not gonna be one of the priorities this year because we've seen an increase for our municipalities when it comes to highway user revenue. I hate to use acronyms, sorry about that. But we're not really seeing it yet on the state level. But the problem is, the monies that we used to see were based on, a lot of it was based on gasoline sales. And as we see the continued increase in electric cars and that type of thing, a lot of that money is, is, is not there anymore. But we're gonna continue at, at the state level to push, but, but I'm not sure. We can put that on the radar, but we're not gonna push that on the Mako level this year because we've, we've exhausted efforts. It's not to say we won't do it again next year, but at this point, we're not.
We have the five-year period that we gained in the last session.
Right. What little bit of gain it was, right.
Yeah. And so, the calculation is where in that next five years does this now?
Just a question on that. Is an electric car plug-in, is there tax taken from that for highway user?
No.
No, no tax at all, okay. If you had a solar-powered charger, you wouldn't even know it exists.
So, you want to tax the sun?
No, no, that is not what I said. In this favor, no way.
Wait, wait, what?
Taxing the rain, taxing the sun.
Wants? I was just asking a simple question to pay for infrastructure for the roads. Oh, heavens, no.
Okay, so, so some of these issues are to build coalition from Mako and other jurisdictions in going forward delegation, or going forward to legislation. Others are going to be very county-specific, and that's okay. You know, we still need to enforce those. The other issues are going to be bond bills that I do want to talk to the delegation about, some in, you know, south of 26, so in District Nine, Nine Alpha, but most in District Five and the rest of Carroll County. We talked a little bit about the triage beds earlier. I am 100% convinced we do not have the solution to the problem set that has been identified. And we have some infrastructure down there with RSS and Shoemaker House, but I believe a bond bill would be necessary to build out a capital project for more beds and taking care of our community down there. Another one, and I'm just going to go down this list just to highlight, the Ag Center, you know, is, got a great opportunity to go after a bond bill. I believe they're, we, we've tasked them, or I've, or I've asked them, is an easier way to build a business plan and their needs for their Ag Center. So, we need to be prepared to present that as well. Charles Carroll, you know, is another one. And I'm sure you're going to highlight that a whole lot more. But again, this is a community center. There is a requirement up there. It's been identified. We've come up with a solution. Now, we have to resource it. So, a bond bill for that. Carroll Community College.
By the way, on that particular, and that way, I won't have to check it off my list when it comes to me. We're, we're going to, we're going to be focusing on the SHA requirement of that turn lane that we need to put in there, which is going to, I think, potentially be a little bit over a million. So, we're, we're drawing down on that, because when you go after these bond bills, you can't say, well, we need, you know, a certain, we might need this, but it's got to be specific. So, I got to stay up drawing down on that.
Awesome.
So, we'll, we'll make sure that we have that figure in order to get that accomplished, because the state, as you know, Ed, when you and I were in those meetings, they said, well, we'll look for monies from our, well, you know, that that is like, you know, shooting something into the wind, because.
Just to reinforce Commissioner Rosting here, we, we did talk to Bill Studdamard at the Ag Center, and he's putting together a whole.
Okay, yeah, because that kind of took me by surprise. I serve on the Ag Board, and I hadn't heard that. And I'm like, what?
Well, it's the lifestyle. This is when I bought my pig.
Which, which half?
The kosher pig.
The kosher swine. So, anyway.
He gets the front half.
Okay, as I was talking, so weirdly interrupted, but, okay. Charles, Ag Center, Charles, Community College, Carroll Community College. As Carroll Community College is building their sports program, I really appreciate the, the work that they're doing in building their fall sports program, identifying space there for a sports complex. And we'll be talking with the community college about that. But again, a potential bond bill, working with our delegation in doing a match to building out that sports complex.
I've talked to Dr. Ball about this, and we're going to have to talk some more. What they, I kind of, we want to go, you know, hand in glove of what they want. So, I'm not sure whether they're looking for a sports complex bond bill or a stadium bond bill, because right now, their, their sports are soccer and cross-country is what they're putting up right now. So, maybe stadium, or maybe a bond bill for both, I don't know. But I'm having talks with Dr. Ball, and I'll, you know.
He's aware of the timeline, right, Dennis?
Yeah, yeah. Actually, he wants to talk this week, but he was away on vacation.
And now, that, that is key in bringing this up, to make sure that those at the Ag Center, at the community college, they are tracking. These are discussions that we want to have with the delegation in a few weeks. So, again, and I, I will, I will stop at this point. These are the headlines, bumper sticker type of topics. There's a lot of work to be done in developing the plan to present to delegation or to, to Mako for legislation. But we have a lot of work to do, but it's all about this county. And we've got to focus on opportunities to take care of our community in this county. So, thanks.
I had the Carroll Community College bond.
And here we go.
But I do, I have a couple, two things that are not the normal stuff. But the first thing, I like to try to put, push legislation forward for no cash bail. What that means is, if you're arrested for something, you get a citation or ticket to show up for court. You don't have to post bail. Because what this does, this, if you don't have the money, you stay in jail. I don't think that's a fair system. If you get a ticket, other states have done this, I'm not just throwing this out, the other states have done this, and they get the same, almost to the, the exact same percentage point of compliance of people showing up for court, whether they posted bail or they've got a summons. If you go to jail because you can't post bail, two things can happen, or two things usually do happen, that you're, you're, say, you're told, you know, if you plead guilty here, you're paid like a $75 fine or something of that sort. And some people succumb to that, even whether guilty or not, because $75 for the fine rather than $250 for bail, which they don't have. So, a no cash bail, I think, is, has to be statewide. We couldn't just do it in Carroll County.
Yeah, that was my question.
Second thing happens, if you arrested for something, you could be innocent or whatever. If you go to a bond, a bail bondsman, they'll put up the bill for you. Whether you're innocent or not, you pay that 10% to them. There are people that have to pay thousands of dollars back to the bail bondsman. They weren't, they were either, the case was dropped or they were innocent, and they still have that bill. I don't think that's fair. A third thing that happens is that if you go to jail and you're, you're on the Obamacare, I can't remember the real name of it.
American PDC.
Right. You lose your insurance, because you're in prison, you're in jail. Whether you're guilty or not, you lose the insurance. Now, when you come out, and I don't know the procedure of having to find out to get back the insurance and so forth, but those things happen to you, whether you're guilty or innocent, because you can't afford bail. And like I said, other states have done this. They, they incorporated no cash bail, you get subpoenaed. Now, for some crimes, there's still bail. And I would like to look at, see what they have done, but I have something to throw out here to you guys to look at, because I think it's important. And I don't want to read the minds of the founding fathers, but I don't think that they had a, a, a system in place where if you had money, you're out of jail, but if you don't, you're, you're in jail until the trial comes up, which could be quite a while. I always push, want to use plastic bags, but, but since the city of Westminster has just passed their own ordinance, and I think if we look at that and, and see what they have done, I thought was very well thought out, because it doesn't affect the smaller stores. The mom and pop stores aren't affected by the, the, the no use for, the banning the one-use, one-use plastic bags. It doesn't affect them at all. But if you're a chain or a franchise, franchise store or a large place, it affects those stores. So, you're not hurting the smaller individual that way. I would like to look and see what their ordinance says specifically, because they made some changes to it before they passed it. But I just think it's, it's, it's well thought out. I think we should look at it.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Whoa, wait, what? Okay.
Well, the other stuff I was pushing.
No, 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 no.
So, I'm not, not going back to that.
Well, I know that you've put in some, some, some drug opioid-related bills, and I, okay.
All I keep hearing about that is, let's see if the, was it the Heart Act? I think it's the Heart Act. Let's see if the Heart Act takes effect. Okay, it's been years, but we're still waiting for the Heart Act to take effect. And every time I push something for the opioids, let's wait for the Heart Act. Okay. So, I'm not pushing that right now.
All right.
I'll wait one more year.
The bail bond lobby.
I may be in trial lawyers.
What is the state's attorney's and sheriff's opinion on the bail bond?
I don't know.
They're, they're, trust me, they'll weigh in.
Yeah.
They, they will.
And there's other, I mean, it doesn't have to be no cash bail. It could be other things as, as well.
Right.
I mean, another idea, since you asked about it.
Sorry.
You, you put the bail up, but if you're found guilty, because if, my big thing is, you shouldn't have to stay in jail, because you don't have the money. And if you're innocent, you shouldn't have to pay, you shouldn't have to pay thousands of dollars to a bail bondsman later. I just don't think that's right. So, another way to look at that is if you go to bail bondsman, because you don't have thousands of dollars to put up yourself, instead of having to pay them back to 10%, if you're found innocent, you pay them back 1%.
Isn't this a judicial system?
Well, it could be. I mean, I, I can, obviously, you're not going to get anywhere unless you, you bring it up. So, let's be clear. That's, I think it's good, especially if it's been done in other states. You know, let's, let's see where it goes.
I wish I was more of an original thinker, but I get my ideas.
Well, no, I mean, that's good too. You look at what's going on across the country, and if it's worked somewhere else, why not? So, but I can see some challenges when it comes to the folks that line up to testify, if it gets that far. But we can certainly introduce it and see what they, see what they say. So, that's fine. Yep. Begin to come, you're not going to get anywhere if you don't talk about it.
That's right. You've got to throw it out there.
All right. Real quickly for me, I know that we've already talked about this, but towing regulations, that's on us here in the county. We don't have any towing regulations. This came to light for me when one of the Butler ambulances broke down several months ago, and they got a ridiculous bill in, in the mail from the tower. So, I know surrounding jurisdictions have towing regulations, and we don't have a thing. So, everybody's just willy-nilly here and charge what they want. I think that's wrong. So, I've, I've already asked Mike to look into it, to look at what the other jurisdictions have done. We're not trying to handcuff our towing folks, but there has to be some sort of way in which we can put a, a ceiling on, on that, because I, I couldn't believe the bill that this guy got for like a four-mile tow. It was absurd. So, I wanted him to look at that, and I also know that there, there's a list of, of people that are utilized when it comes to your typical accident out on the road, who gets called first, if, you know, and that kind of thing. So, all those things come into play. We don't have anything there. So, I'm concerned about that. I've asked, and we may have to do local legislation to address that.
Is that messing with free enterprise? I, I'm, I'm just asking.
It's a good question, Dick, but I.
I, I haven't heard that.
When I saw, when I saw an $1,800 bill for a four-mile tow, I'm not sure free enterprise comes into play.
Gosh.
I think it's worth looking into.
Yeah. So, so anyway, we're, we're looking at that.
Business worth looking into.
Yeah, good business practices.
Mike, that, that would sound like enabling legislation. Carroll County would be looking to probably be added to a list of other counties that are authorized to adopt towing regulations.
And I'm talking about, I'm not talking, again, I've already shared this with Mike, I'm not looking to handcuff anyone. I'm looking for reasonable, common sense, let, local legislation. I'm not, I'm not trying to interfere with business, but that's ridiculous. And these towers know that. They know it. So, that, that's one thing. We have got to do something to drill down on our noise ordinance here. Now, I know that the state went after some sort of a noise ordinance. Tim, and, and, I, I don't know what they did with that, but we were, we kind of put it on hold, Mike, last year, if you remember, to see what they did before we did something with ours. Ours is completely outdated. Let, let's be clear.
Yours just mirrors the state limits.
Right, but this, right. And the state was doing something with theirs. I, I'm only asking to keep it on the radar, because I think we need to do something with ours. The other interesting thing about our noise ordinance is, we can't enforce it. We have no way to enforce a noise ordinance.
You're absolutely right on that.
Now, it used to be that the county, we had county employees that did it, and then the metering thing, they went out of date. So, then we handed it over to the law enforcement. They don't have any meters either. So, when we get, and we continue to see the events venues pop up in some of our more rural areas, and I've got it in District One, you know, and, and the DJ for the weddings playing the bass at 10 o'clock on a Sunday night, we can send law enforcement out, and they can say, could you turn it down? But that's it. So, we have got to do something about that. I don't know if that's legislative, but we have got to address our noise ordinance and perhaps reach some sort of agreement with somebody who can go out and measure these things. And I know there've been some other things. I had a shooting complaint from a neighbor in District One.
Yeah.
So, so it, it, maybe we have to look at it legislatively, I don't know. I only bring it up, because I know that we kind of put it on hold last year in, in, to see what the state was going to do, because I think the state was, was tweaking theirs. So, radar item, okay?
There was a county in Eastern Shore, who was that? I was talking about that, in Mako.
I can't remember. Tim, you want to?
I think we have all the legislative authority we need to do some, a noise, to correct our own noise ordinance. So, I don't think we would need to pursue any additional state legislation on that.
All right. Well, maybe let's then begin the, the process whenever we can. I know there's a lot on everybody's plates, but in order to, to tweak that. And we may have to reference the state, look at theirs, and see what theirs says, and especially when it comes to the levels and, you know, all that stuff, so.
I agree, because it's a constituent issue. I think we all face some time in our terms that we have to address, and we lack some clarity in it.
I'm going to stop there. I am going to add one bond bill that I'm going to be asking for, in the hopes that they get me the information that they need, and that's the Carroll County Historical Society. They, like some other venues around our county, insert Union Mills Homestead here, or, or other areas, other venues like that, have got some serious infrastructure issues up here on Main Street in Westminster. I met with those folks a couple of weeks ago, and I've asked them to drill down and get me exactly what they need, because again, when we go after these bond bills, we've got to make sure that we have the right numbers in front of us. We can't just say, we need about. So, they're, I hope, hopefully, they're going to do that. And I would like to get the, us on board as a group here to help them, because they are, they're, they're having some issues up there. And I'm a big history guy, I really am, and I think we need to continue to make sure that we have the resources here and let them have the resources they need. And there's a lot of stuff up in those buildings that, that they're moving each time it rains. That's troubling to me. So, I want to make sure we, we do that. I think that's all that I've got right now. When I get back from Mako, my list is going to increase, I think. So, so hang on. And Mike, you're going to be down there with us, so we can probably get you in the process earlier than here, because you're going to be down there with us on these issues. So, I know that, I know that we're going to have a couple that come up that's, we're going to ask you to roll with.
There'll be a number of, as there always are, state senators and delegates there. And the Speaker of the House will be there. So, I think it'll, it'll be a target-rich environment.
Yep. Okay. Any other issues for Mike right now?
So, thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Wanted to do this and this, and then you leave, and I'll finish with this.
That's fine. Yeah, why don't we do that? We're going to go out of sync here a little bit, because our next, and it's not going to, for those that are in the room for it.
Thank you, Mr. Powell.
We're not going to delay it here. We're going to roll right along. The next item on our agenda is your discussion and decision when it comes to the purchasing bid protest. We're going to, we're going to skip over that for a moment. I know we have public comment, so let's get to that first, and then we'll do what we need to do administratively and open.
Well, good morning. This thing working? Yeah. On the fourth, there was an article published in the Carroll County Times by Commissioner Boucher. And he is our esteemed, self-proclaimed historian and political science professor. And what he writes here is that he and all of the elected commissioners, and I quote, "are mere figureheads that rubber-stamp most of what comes before them generated by the administrator." Now, I never thought of any of you as.
Bob, I'm not, I'm not taking away from your time. We've always not allowed individual tax. We've always not allowed individual tax, so make sure your comments are.
It's about the article, I didn't like this.
No, 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 that's fine, just keep it in general, if you will.
And I'm doing it, but I've never regarded any of you as.
Alright, just out of respect, alright, okay.
Put back my three, my.
I know, I, I said that, I'm not taking away your time.
That's alright, but the point of it is, I've never thought of you in that light. But if this is the case, and if this is accurate, then you must correct it. You need to take back the authority given to you by the voters. Now, I find this at cross purposes with the idea of charter. All we do is just change the titles, it still works the same way. Whether it's an elected administrator, it's still an all-powerful Wizard of Oz position. Alright, now, if that is the case, and you need to discuss this amongst yourselves, then I would suggest that you replace this as a clerical position with a bid on the contract every year, and that way, you have absolute control as you should. And furthermore, you can have every one of your department heads answer to you directly. Now, we have total representation. And this whole charter argument is a circular mess. This place is limited. It is landlocked, you don't have the growth potential that some of these other places do. And I want you to take a look in the mirror. Have you noticed we all have a little less hair, starting to get a little gray, what's left? We are part of the baby boom generation. And when our parents came back from that war, they got busy. Our generation didn't bring that many babies forward. That means that there's gonna be less and less of a demand for the houses that we baby boomers own, and you're gonna place ever greater tax burden on them. Please respect the tax dollars. Thank you.
Nicely done, on your timing. Okay, thank you, Mr. Curlin. Anything else? Okay, how about for open admin? Do we have, what, we'll do the agendas at the, at the end here, but anything else for open admin before we get to the?
We had land acquisition, closed land acquisition last week. Do you need to adopt those minutes? You have them in your package.
I'll make a motion to adopt the minutes on the closed land acquisition.
From August 1st?
From August 1st.
Second.
Alright, got a motion in second to adopt those. All, everybody had a chance to look at them?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay.
The only other thing is if you guys wanted to discuss anything about Mako, but with the flip and time being short.
Yeah, we'll do that, no, we'll, we'll do that in a moment, but right now, we'll get to the next item on our agenda, and that's discussion and decision, reference to the bid protest. And I'll turn it over to, to Vice President Rostine, as I have recused myself from, from the proceedings as it pertains to this issue.
Okay, so it sounds good, so let's get to, tab. For our decision that we're to make today, after hearing the discussion last week on the 25th, or two weeks ago, I guess, on the 25th, I believe it was.
Commissioner, can I give you a little background on it? If that will help.
And, and actually, I was gonna turn it right over to you, so go ahead. Thanks.
Commissioners, the next item concerns the RFP for Architectural Design Services for the future Office of the State's Attorney. You recall on July 25th, you had a public hearing on a protest filed by, under our county purchasing policy, by Mann's Woodward Studios concerning the RFP. At the hearing, you first heard from Mike Myers, the Bureau Chief of Purchasing, and he summarized why the Bureau found Murphy and Dittenhafer to be the highest overall ranked proposer, as well as the highest-ranked technical proposer. Next, you heard from representatives from the protester, Mann's Woodward, as to why they felt the negotiations should continue due to what they perceive as to be scoring errors made during the procurement process. And they also argued that they were, in fact, the highest-ranked technical firm. And finally, you heard from a representative from Murphy and Dittenhafer as to why they agree with the Bureau's assessment that they were the highest overall and technically ranked, technical-ranked proposer, and that they should be the sole negotiator with the county from this point on. And Commissioners, under the purchasing policy, you have 20 days from the close of the hearing to render a written decision. And in order to make that timeline work, we need you to deliberate today in public, talk amongst yourselves, and render an oral decision today, which will later be reduced to writing.
Okay. So we've had a couple of weeks to look at this, we've heard from both, you know, parties. We heard from, as you mentioned, the county. Any, you know, now it's open discussion amongst us. For my, my biggest question was, were the processes and procedures that were put in place clearly understood by both parties? And it comes down to that rounding up, you know, discussion? If it was clearly in place, and it was understood by both parties, then the decision is really clear, that it stands as is. If it wasn't clear, and if we have any question of it not being clear, then they, you know, this protest has merit. We're not here to change the process and procedures. That's not, it's, it's, was it, and that's the one thing I'm grappling with, that it's still not very clear to me if that rounding up process was crystal clear to both parties, regardless if somebody was prepared to or not, so.
Even if you rounded up, and it was rounded up.
Yeah.
Track backwards from there, even if you didn't round up, if you took the scores without rounding up, the company that came out M and D on top still came out on top. So regardless of whether it rounded up or not, it didn't make any difference, the overall score for M and D would have still been higher.
I, I was looking at both, both parties understood the parameters they had to go in with. That's what they were judged upon, that's where they had the ability to give presentations, and they were ranked by our purchasing department. Now, I think there's, I, I saw things in that, that process that in the future, I may want to come back to, but right now, that has nothing to do with this. I want to go back to the point that both parties knew what they were getting into. They came in with presentations. Our purchasing department did what they thought, I think, was great. There was a mathematical error, but they corrected that, and that was brought up to all parties out front. So I'm thinking, you know, they have done a great job of, both parties did a great job presenting their cases, and I think we're moving now to make a decision that it was done correctly or not, and everybody understood that. Now, I don't, I find, I have trouble finding any evidence contradictory to the point that they would have not understood the whole process.
I have empathy for all of your positions on this. This is very difficult. But what's tough for me is, in the end, we don't have an overall cost. I think in the best interest of the county, we need to figure out what the overall cost is. We still don't know that.
We, we can't deal with that now.
That, yeah, that, we can.
I understand that.
We can change procedures, well, we can change procedures on how the RFP is sent out, I think, at a later time if we feel that, that some procedures should be changed. However, what we're deciding on right now is with the way the RFP was sent out, and the way the parameters were set, and the things were sent in. This is what came up, and these are the scores, and I think that's what we have to go by. Could it be different in the future? I think it should be, but that's not what we're looking at right now.
I understand that.
Right.
Just makes it difficult for this decision.
Well, it, it, it does, but it doesn't, because it went out under this RFP, it went out with these parameters, it went out with this is the way it's gonna be done, and this is what the outcome was. I don't think it's a difficult decision at all.
Well, it's difficult for me in a sense that we're looking at what we think is in the best interest, long-term, for the county, and it's dollars and cents, but I understand precisely what you're, you're saying.
This is fair and equitable treatment for all parties, is what we're deciding today.
Exactly, the focus, and again, has, like Dennis you said, was, was it clearly understood that the process and procedures in place in the bidding process was understood by both parties? And, you know, the outcome's the outcome. If it wasn't, because, because the question had to do with this rounding issue, seemed to be the biggest sticking point from, from listening the other day. Understand that, but if it was clearly understood that they have a rounding up process that's in place, then that's the, that's what's in place. Should it be there? That's not our, our question right now. That's on the table.
It's not the current question.
Right. Any other thoughts? No, I think, you know, my view on it. Tim, do you have any other additional?
No, I don't.
Comments you want to make?
I just note that if it's a tie, the appeal fails.
If it's a tie, the appeal fails. Okay. Okay.
So there's no more discussion, do we, ours, is it just like a regular, we make a motion and move forward with that?
We either make a motion to approve the appeal, or make a motion not to approve the appeal, moving forward.
I'll make a motion to uphold the original decision of M and D being the, I guess, the overall winner of the, of the RFP process and award them the bid.
Can I suggest that you, you make a motion to continue the negotiation solely with M and D and reject the protest?
Okay. I'll make that motion right there.
I will second that motion.
Okay, I apologize, say that one more time.
You make a motion to, let's say, deny the appeal and continue the negotiation solely with, got it, M and D, Murphy and Dittenhafer.
Okay. Is that the motion you were making?
Yes.
Okay, and I will second it. Are there any further discussions on this? Okay, hearing done, all in favor, and the motion has been put forward?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Unanimous four, zero. Okay, so the motion carries, got it. Now, we will continue.
Now, just on thinking back of that, I would like to review what Commissioner Boucher brought up in the future, future, that its total cost in there, not narrowly.
Well, we can review the process.
Yes. Our purchasing has.
Right, yep.
Maybe other things you want to.
I'd like to put it, right, put it on the agenda to review the purchase process in the future, and how, how we do it, yep.
Okay.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Okay, back to you, Mr. President.
Okay.
The President's back, okay.
Yeah. Miraculously dropped in out of a ceiling tile. Let's square our agendas. And this is gonna be pretty quick. Next week, Maryland Association of Counties Summer Conference. Anybody want to make any comments on that? I think we've kind of talked about that. The only thing that I've got to say is, to remind everyone that Vivian is putting together a schedule of events down there. Pay attention to those events. Several of us are being, are, are involved in various sessions. I'm gonna be moderating several of those as a member of the Board at, at Mako. I know our staff is involved in a lot of, a lot of the sessions, so pay attention to those closely, and it's good that we try to get a tag-team effort in a lot of those sessions, so that you can see where we're, see where we're gonna be and what, what we're gonna be doing.
And I'm looking forward to hearing you speak at the firefighters.
Yeah, so that's Saturday morning.
I always miss that.
And, and that's, yeah.
Yeah, so.
I drink lots of coffee.
Yeah, so, and Ed, you, I think you alluded to it earlier about the fact that there's, there's a myriad of topics that, that the winds of change theme has for Mako this year. And we're gonna all try to do as much as we can to get to all of those, so that, that, you know, that's the other thing. If, if you see that two or three of us are in one place, you might want to send one or two in the other direction, just so that we get all of that. And whenever we get back from Mako, and we've always done this for the two new kids on the block, we always have a, a wrap-up or summary, if you will, when we come back, as to what we, we took in down there. And that's always, that's always good too, so.
You made it sound like Ed and I are a rock group.
I've, I've never been associated with a boy band ever, and I don't ever want to be, so just share that with you.
Yeah, but you got that kind of look about you, and you know.
Nice outfit.
I didn't mind the comment.
I was gonna say that. You beat me to it.
Alright, anything additional on Mako? I can't imagine if there is after that.
Thank goodness not.
Yeah, okay. Apparently, Fraser, you've got the Commissioners' Report.
Oh, yeah.
So you might want to.
I'm gonna fly back up to do that and fly down.
Okay, alright. Okay, let's look at the next week of the 19th, then, August the 19th. Tuesday, the 20th, is the next Chamber Breakfast. That's Commissioner Boucher at the Mount Airy Branch Library, and that's at 8:00 a.m., Tuesday, August 20th.
Put me down for that.
Planning and zoning is at 9:00 a.m., that's Commissioner Rostine. 2:00 p.m., Veterans Advisory, Commissioner Weaver.
And I will also be.
And then 6:30 p.m. is Parklet Opening Celebration. I don't know.
Just leave it as is.
Already.
It's all good.
Okay.
It's a parklet.
Commissioner Rostine, 6:30 p.m.
A parklet is, they take a handful of parking spaces and actually make it into a, a meeting place with benches and convenience.
In a parking lot.
Basically, in a parking lot, yes. It's a downtown cultural thing, so.
It's movable too, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah. It's like what's his name on the commercial where the cars are going all around.
Yeah, yeah. Exactly. Just leave it as is.
Not as fast, though.
I'm lying something new here.
You and I both.
Alright, Wednesday, at 6:00 p.m., the 21st, is the Carroll Community College Board Meeting. That's Commissioner Fraser. Thursday, the 22nd, open session. We're gonna go through some town and county agreements, Hampstead and Manchester specifically, HVAC equipment at the courthouse, radios for public safety. We're gonna come back with a grant award for the Summer Youth Connection Program, and then we're gonna continue our discussion with our General Assembly legislation and what we would like to see there. Probably be a couple of things added, I guess, to that as well. But we'll also add in there the, the summary and the recap of Mako. We'll put that as an agenda item, so that we can, each of us will have a chance to voice what we've seen down there. And then, the only other thing, that week is Sunday, Commissioner Boucher has the Commissioners' Report. Anything else on our agendas? They're pretty easy. Okay. Alright, anything else for open admin? Alright, I need a motion to go into close for legal.
Some move.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then I need a motion to recess to 1:00 p.m., and that will be the comprehensive rezoning adventure that we're on for another work session with them.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I, can I adjourn after that now, instead of doing that this afternoon? Can I get a motion to adjourn after the work session? Tim?
Uh, no, I.
Alright, never mind.
You're gonna be here.
I know, I just wanted to get that out of the way now.
I like how you operate.
You're getting anxious here.
Alright, fine, we're going to recess.
I would have motioned, but that's right.
After we do close legal.
On the top lot.
Yeah, we're going to the top lot.
Alright, we're going into closed, we'll see you back at 1:00.
The parklet.
Thank you.